Same seat that I, the person before me did.
No, Rose, in their back, let me tell you a story.
Really? Old rules. Oh, yeah. I sat in the wrong seat once, let me tell you.
That's a different board.
I can't imagine.
It's a different city manager, I'm thinking.
When you come in here and find out you don't have a nameplate in the place on you.
Just leave.
Yeah.
That was a dream he had last night.
Oh, was it?
We'll just carve it in the desk for you, Jerry.
Rose, that's actually how I got my wife. Did I ever tell you that story?
You got the wrong name tag.
He was sitting in the wrong seat.
No, so first day of a junior level college course on philosophy, I sat in the seat furless from the door and just sat there and my wife, my future wife, comes and sits on the seat behind me. And she didn't track a woman and all that, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, second day of class, I know that we always like to sit in the same seat. Like, the first seat they pick is the same seat they stay the entire semester. Well, you know, I'm a younger audience guy, so I sat on the seat closest to the door.
This one?
Comes and sits in the seat directly behind me again. And I'm like, she's gotta have something for me. Why did you sit behind me? You know, I'm not decided, nobody does that. So, you know, started flirting with her, started dating her, married her. So, years on, you know, I've been with her for twenty years now. Years on, I said, so, you know, why did you sit behind me second day of class? She says, oh, I was late to class out there, I didn't even notice it.
Well, it worked.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna wait till I get my check.
I feel like you're gonna sing today, Mike.
There's ignoring you or getting your.
No, I heard. No, I was told that you guys couldn't hear me without a microphone, so. Double check. So, I gotta go grab my, uh, my computer.
It's nice to see you in person.
All right. Finally.
Oh, that's Ms. Robertson, she's from Mission Point. She's gonna be giving a presentation about what they do.
Molly's underneath her.
Is that it?
Oh, there he is. Is. I see.
Oh, you see that in town or something?
Never know what comes.
Blowing around.
Three has happened tonight. Holy cow.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is it Jeep night?
I mean, all the way parking, all the way down.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Bring him in, bring him in.
My granddaughter and her. Those are mine, our jeepers.
Are they?
They're gonna be there tonight, I guess.
I need new fire extinguisher, or fire.
Smoke detector?
Yes.
We just replaced all of ours.
Well, we can get free ones from the fire department.
Well. When you live with fire stuff.
Oh, hello?
Batteries are all out.
Yeah. Yeah.
They were like twenty years old, so I was like, okay.
Mine has gotta be ancient.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Wonderful.
My fourteen-year-old got his first COVID shot today.
All right.
He's so excited.
How'd he do?
He out.
So far?
He's fine, yeah. He was funny, cuz, you know, I'm telling him to do the chicken wing, you know, and like wiggle it out. And while we're sitting and waiting, and he's like, I got the best, like, fourteen-year-old eye roll of like, mom, it was just a shot.
Mm-hmm. Good.
Screamed and hollered until she was like eighteen.
His sister was a lot like that. Like, we had a tetanus shot that required several people.
Yeah.
But no, he's a, he takes a shot like a boss, and he has ever since he was a little kid. It's amazing to me. Added ice cream really early.
Oh, yeah. I had to have MMR and Hep B.
So, so there was much coverage tonight.
I left my bottle of water outside.
Oh.
Cuz nothing like concrete mixers and deep-fried cheese.
Oh, okay.
I'll keep hitting the mints.
I know, right? Cause of saliva.
These things drive me right out.
Are tricked up?
This little flip side that says open.
I can't get packet.
Oh, my gosh.
The agenda, but I can't.
There's something magical about that.
Man, I'll fool myself.
I know, right?
Oh, I'm little thing, right?
Did you get?
Know where I am. I just know what I had up here, which was the manager's report.
That's, I can only get manager's report and agenda.
Hello?
It's all this other stuff on here. Hi.
Hi, John.
How are you, sir?
Good, Mr. Womack.
I don't know, Rose.
That's crazy.
Are you here just to hang out with me, or are you here on behalf of the chamber?
Here on behalf of the chamber.
I'll see now, I'm offended.
Keith Fraser, are you at the new fire station?
What?
Are you at, it's, it's looking really snazzy.
I gotta find a mute on this thing. We, uh, we moved in a couple, three weeks ago.
Look at the top, top left-hand corner.
But by no means have we completely moved.
Sure, but it's looking really snazzy.
Well, we get our furniture Monday.
Got three things up there, you only got one.
Well, you got a chair at least.
Yes.
Did you have to drag it over from your house?
No, I dragged it over from the old fire station. I didn't realize how much former chief Rose accumulated over the years.
But look what I, I got right here.
I know, I did, and mine just kinda disappeared.
That's why you aren't having to spend as much.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad to see it's looking so snazzy. Are we still on for the twelfth?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
I wanna get something for the wall here. It looks kinda bare, but I'm not sure what.
I'll see.
I'm thinking maybe a sunny and sheer holster.
It's just the agenda.
Okay, what are you looking for?
Oh, dear. Well, it looks really nice.
Thank you.
So, packet again.
You put a lot of, you and your, your folks put a lot of work into making that happen. I mean, I know we had builders and all of that, but the fire department.
Where'd it go?
Did their part.
It takes, it takes a city to raise a child during the.
Ms. Conley, uh, I couldn't remember. Is, is the mayor coming to this meeting?
Okay.
At the meeting right now, but the mayor has asked me to run the meeting.
Sorry, Mr. Hall, I didn't see you there. Okay.
We were just talking over some tomato plants.
Okay, looks like, uh, we've got a quorum. Do you guys wanna get started?
Sure. So, we're gonna call, let's see, what time is it? Seven oh four? So, at seven oh four on Thursday, May thirteenth, we are gonna call this meeting to order. If everyone would like to, who is in a place where they can, rise and will say the pledge. Um, I'm not sure the best way for me to do this, but. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will call the roll. Ms. Atchison?
Here.
Mr. Gross?
Here.
Ms. Nixon?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Race?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
And Mayor Proton, Conley is here. At this time, we will do public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and the public hearing portion of the agenda. However, the council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for actions. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you would like a response, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comment? Ms. Clark?
Hello, everyone, my favorite people. Lots of good things going at the library. Of course, we're getting ready for some reading program. And we've raised, all the money has come in from all of our businesses and individuals and over thirty-five hundred dollars, actually. And we have a great, a great program planned. It's called Tales and Tails. So, T-A-L-E-S and T-A-I-L-S. So, we're having a, um, an animal theme. And one of our programs, uh, is, it's going to be virtual, but at Deer Tracks, um, they're making a special video of, uh, you know, a special show for us with their, all of their animals, and they're doing a lot of upgrades and updates out there, and they're getting some new animals that are very, um, they're unusual, and they're pretty excited about it. I'm not sure. Uh, we knew about it a few days before they advertised it, but if you wanna see the new animals that they're adding, in case I, in case I'm ahead of them, they should be displayed on their website. That is very exciting, and, uh, the library gets to, um, you know, show what they have out there and, and celebrate animals and anything with a tail. So, uh, I also wanna congratulate the city on the new fire station. It's absolutely amazing. And I have to be careful of wearing buttons because they pop off every time I drive by there. Congratulations. I, I kind of know how you feel, you know, getting a new library and everything, Marty. And who, and what fire, you know, Fire Chief lives next door to the fire station where he works, right? I've, I've been peeking in the windows, and I know I can, and Mike said, you can, you can ask me, I'll let you in. Marty says it at the post office, you know, so. I know I can, but it's just like, I, we're never, you know, in sync. But I know on June twelfth, we will be in sync. And I'm really looking forward to all the activity and the whole heart of Cedar Springs. Our heart gets bigger and more beautiful and inclusive and just everything about our town and everything that's happening is so exciting. And, um, the library is going to have a book sale that day. We might as well, there'll be people out, right? It'll be like Red Flannel Day. All these people around and enjoying, having a good time, concerts and art in the park and just all kinds of things. Uh, another.
When can people sign up for the summer reading program?
June fourteenth, you can sign. But the, the software's ready, we have the prizes in, we have everything of how to sign up, and so it's gonna be great. Uh, one of the things I just wanted to share too, as you know, where, where, we didn't, we haven't done anything about a millage or any more money or anything like that. We, we have a lot going on with our new apartment, our beautiful library, and we're all working together. So, um, we, we find ways, you know, to bring more money, and like, like the summer reading program, it's free. We have lots of coupons besides the money. Um, and so, uh, last year, February fourteenth, um, Mary Gardner, uh, who was new to the library at the time, she said, let's have a giving tree that people can buy books, you know, and we'll have all these little, uh, books displayed, little things that they can open and say, oh, yeah, I'd like to buy them, take it off the tree, and then they buy it. Since February fourteenth, and of course, then we shut down for COVID, but from February fourteenth to today, we have over three thousand dollars has been donated and bought all those books, and we got the bu- books from Amazon. You know, they were new, they were brand new, but they, but they were cheaper, half price of what you'd pay off a shelf. So, we've really added a lot of books, and Mary's been keeping track. So, that's another way that we've added to our collection, and, um, a couple of days ago, a young man walked in and he said, oh, my, my mother wanted to, like, give this money, and he's given at, at least a thousand dollars himself. He challenged his father, who's the librarian of special collections at Grand Valley, to give a thou- uh, five hundred dollars, you know, his son just gave five hundred dollars. He did. And he walked in with a thousand dollars the other day, and we were going like, oh, our summer reading programs all paid for, so what are we gonna do with this? So, we have some new ideas, things going on, and the quilters. You know, uh, Mary Evelyn Vu had her shop in Rockford, and then all, you know, she had to close it. So, all the money that she was putting toward electricity and all the stuff that you do when you own a shop, um, they, the quilters, when they moved to the library as an adult library program, uh, they still started taking mon- keep, they kept giving money to it, like they were going to help her keep her lights on. So, she's on the board now, and then we, um, you know, I just, oh, on, on a side note, I just had my.
I'm pretty sure your four minutes is up.
Well, happy me, I just finished my twenty-year anniversary.
Bravo, bravo.
That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else with a public comment?
Uh, Ms. Conley, we do have Mission Point who would like to give a presentation. I didn't know if you wanted to.
Are they, well, are they on the, I see them under public comment, but are they on the agenda elsewhere?
They're not.
Okay, then, um, and if they've asked, I mean, I, sure, they can, and we'll give them however much time they need.
Okay, so I wanted to thank everyone, city council members, for having Mission Point Healthcare Services an opportunity to speak to all of you. I'm gonna go ahead and share a brief PowerPoint, and I'm gonna see how, if I can do that for you. Can you all see that?
Oh, you, you just have to give me a second. You have to ask to share a screen, so just give me one second. Okay, go ahead and try again.
Can you see that now?
No, there should be a green icon on the bottom center that says share screen. If you click that, you'll, you should be able to share your screen. If not, I can share the screen from here, and you can just kinda walk us through it.
Yes, i- if you don't mind, uh, it, I clicked on share, but nothing's happening.
You guys see that, then? Just please let me know when you want it to scroll to the next.
Oh, okay, you have it up now? I couldn't tell. Okay, so, again, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Mission Point Healthcare Services. Joining me today is our admission director from Cedar Springs, and her name is Brienne Gunderson. So, if you could go, am I using the slide, or are you?
No, just tell me when you wanna go to the next slide, and I'll do it for you.
Okay, next slide. Basically, it's an announcement to welcome you, and then if we could go to the next slide. The next slide is ba- our agenda, our introductions. As far as Mission Point Healthcare Services. Mission Point Healthcare Services has a total of twenty-eight facilities, and we have three regions that we work out of. We have the Western Region, Eastern Region, and Northern Region, which has over twenty-seven fully licensed, uh, beds. And then I will also give a brief summary of our services, and if time allows us, we'll go into some questions or open discussions. Next slide, please. So, again, Mission Point Healthcare Services is a full-service healthcare management company. We are located throughout the greater Grand Rapids, Detroit Metro, and northern Michigan regions. We have, uh, we operate with, again, twenty-seven hundred skilled nursing beds, and we have services from physical rehabilitation, skilled nursing care, wound care, hospice care, Alzheimer's and dementia. And I'm going to also move to the next slide. The next slide basically talks to you about our Western Region, which is what we are part of. We have the eleven facilities, beginning with Belding with a hundred and sixteen beds, Big Rapids, seventy-eight, Cedar Springs, seventy-seven, Ely Manor, which is in Alleghen County, one hundred and one. We have Forest Hills with fifty-eight, Greenville with a hundred, Lamont, which is located in Coopersville with thirty-nine beds. And then we have Health Bridge Post Secute. This facility is located at the Metro Health Village, Meadow Woods in Bloomingdale. Then we have Jackson with ninety beds and Ross Common. So, that would be our Western Region. Next slide, please. Then we move into the Eastern Region. I'm gonna go ahead and let you take a moment to look at that uh, all throughout the eastern side. And then we'll move on to the next slide with our Northern Region. And next slide, please. So, here we are with Mission Point of Cedar Springs. As of two thousand and twenty-one, we achieved our five stars from the Center of Medicare and Medicaid Services. We have twenty-five thousand, two hundred square foot facility, seventy-seven beds, and most recently, we have a partnership with Pain Management Integrated Rehab Consultants. We have Dr. Nicole Strong and her P A Marsh, uh, Peyton Marsh. We are also Orthopedic Associates of Michigan Preferred Provider. We do offer private beds, and of course, we have our therapy gym. Next slide, please. So, are, some of our specialty and services is short-term rehabilitation. So, that would be helping anyone who may have had surgery, an injury or illness, and come do their therapy services with us. Length of stay can be an average of twenty days, but again, that depends on the diagnosis and, uh, everyone's capability of being able to just rehab back into, uh, what they're comfortable with. We also have long-term care, skilled nursing, extensive wound care. The physiatrist is what I mentioned to you about the integrated rehab consultants. We have the service of left ventricular device assist, case management services, therapy services available seven days a week, vestibular therapist to assist with fall prevention and training. And we do have the wound certified nurse and physician's assistant to assist with skin and wounds. And then we also have clinical patient resident rounds with nursing and therapy to focus on resident safety and independence and to prep, to provide the education to those patients, which is a key part of, of being successful when you go back home. Next si- slide, please. And there we have our staff. Uh, we have the administrator, Elise, and director of nursing. Brienne is with us, our admissions director, therapy rehab director, social services. We have, uh, specific units for long-term care and short-term rehab. We have our business office manager, and then we do have the RNs and LPNs and registered dieticians and certified nursing assistant. And I do wanna note, uh, if you do know of anyone who is in these, uh, areas, we are, uh, we have many opening positions from nursing to housekeeping, so we are also hiring. And then the last slide mainly thanks, uh, to Cedar Springs City Council for your time and for, uh, Mission Point Healthcare Services to present to you this evening. And if you have any questions, Brienne and I are available. If not, we will let you continue to your, your council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations. I, I just wanted to congratulate her on achieving five stars with Medicare and Medicaid. That's really a difficult mark to hit, and, and to have done that is very impressive.
We wanna say thank you. That's, uh, Brienne and the nursing team in Cedar Springs. Uh, that definitely is a huge accomplishment. Uh, I wanna note with also our world under the, uh, COVID, so, uh, big congratulations to that team.
And I would like to note that Counselor Nixon, who's telling you that, is an RN. So.
Is that Molly? Okay.
Yes, that is a very, uh, e- expert opinion that is exa- saying to you, congratulations. She fully knows what that means and how hard that is to get.
We appreciate that. Brienne, did you wanna add anything?
Um, just, you know, we do a lot of, uh, admissions and discharges. We usually admit twenty-five to thirty people a month. Um, we are starting to admit more people from home-like communities instead of, um, the hospital, which is kind of a newer thing for us. Uh, we do a lot of quick rehab. Um, we've started doing, you know, week-long rehabs where they go home pretty quick, respite, um, for hospice, so we're pretty busy.
And we do wanna support the city of Cedar Springs, so Donna, if we can help you with your library program, let us know. I know we've done that in the past. And Fire Chief Marty, anything we can support you on, uh, we would love to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions or comments? Then we will move on to the, any other public comment? Then we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adj- yes, you have a question?
We do have a public hearing.
You have a public hearing, Mayor.
Oh, we do, sorry. On my printing, it's on the bottom, and I flipped the page. So, we have a public hearing. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Tomo.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We have a public hearing on the budget for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Any questions from the public on the budget? We've heard this twice, so I think there's not a lot of new information here, but if anyone has any concerns, questions, issues. All right, then I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The public hearing is closed on the budget. Then we're moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Tomo.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The agenda is adopted. Moving on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is sent in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member and does not require the support of any other council members. So, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Make the motion that we adopt the consent agenda as written.
Second.
And I'll do a roll call on this, since it involves money.
Madam Proton, I have a question.
I'm sorry, I should say any discussion?
I, uh, I've wondered all, all along about the, uh, rate for real and personal property in the city of Cedar Springs. This personal property, I don't want a big discussion, but the personal property, I thought we eliminated. I thought we eliminated that sometime at one point. It's very confusing to me, could you address that, Mr.?
Okay, which item on the consent agenda are you talking about?
I'm sorry, it's uh.
The item F?
No, D. D.
D.
Personal property taxes is.
Okay, we 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 can't eliminate, like, that's a the state still charges property taxes. We can have additional ones and we do, like, we have a a bond and we have. But we we can't just decide that all property taxes will be eliminated.
That's not my question.
Oh, then I'm not understanding.
At some point, I thought we eliminated personal property taxes. Could you answer that for me, Darla, please?
Sure, um, so personal property quite a few years ago, it is gradually being phased out.
Okay.
But um, most of the small businesses here in Cedar Springs, if they fill out one form, the five oh seven six form, which means they have eighty thousand or less in value of personal property, they fill out the one form. They do not pay personal property taxes. So just the larger at this time, larger businesses with eighty thousand or more in personal property value in their buildings, they turn in an annual statement to us and they pay the same mileage rate as the real property people. Okay, so it's being phased out.
And but to clarify that phasing out is from the state, not us, right?
What was that?
The the policy on that is from the state, not us.
The state is phasing that out, that's correct.
Thank you, Darla.
Did that fully answer your question, Counselor Powell?
Yes, it did.
All right, any other questions and discussion? All right, then I will do a roll call. Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Conley votes yes. Moving on to action items. A, a motion to approve the Cedar Springs Public Library curtailage agreement. Mr. Womack, would you like to give some information? I know we spoke about this at at least one other meeting, maybe two. But would you like to give some specifics on it before we have a motion to vote?
Sure, so this is basically an agreement um that the city is allowing the library to use the land that surrounds the library building. So the city owns the library building and the land that surrounds it. Um, and this is simply an agreement that uh uh kinda eliminates need for the city to have to approve of any time the library is using the land surrounds the building. So uh it's all upsides for the library organization. Um, and they're already under the city's insurance, so there's no real insurance uh issues or concerns there. Um, really, uh, it's it's just a mu- um, a time-saving device, really.
Okay, any questions?
I have one question, if I could, please.
Sure.
Does that then give the library exclusivity? That when they choose to have an event there, where it would prevent anybody else from getting to the fountain or down in next to some of the artwork, uh, when they're having an event there, do they block it off?
Not not really, so within the agreement itself, it does indicate that the city uh maintains it as a public space and that the city's right to that public space is paramount to the library's uh right to use it. Um, now that being said, uh, you must be a very brave soul to walk between thirty or forty giggling, you know, five-year-olds who are playing with squirt guns uh to look at a fountain or a statue. Um, but no, there is no exclusivity that's granted to them under this agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Then the chair.
Sorry, um, I was reading that um you thought that we could either table this or vote on it? Because did or did the board come back to you with a library?
So so this is something that maybe uh Ms. Clark could uh address. But uh I I provided this to the library a month ago and then again a couple of weeks ago. Um, and so my concern is if we approve of this and then send it over to the library board, uh, they might find a period or a comma in a place that they don't like. Um, and they'll send it back to us and say, well, we totally disagree with this, revamp it, change it, whatever. Um, so I it I I would like to see that their board is in agreement with it first. Um, it's not a strict requirement, cuz we could just change things at a later date. But it seems like it's a duplicativeness of effort to do that. Uh, so Ms. Clark, um, uh, Madam.
Yes, absolutely, Ms. Clark, do you do you have anything to speak to this?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit late to it because it's my mother's eighty-seventh birthday, she's in the hospital and she's on the phone.
Well, happy birthday to your mother.
Okay, well, um, so I have sent the, um, and first of all, I say, I just really appreciate the city manager's um interest in doing this and the benefit of the library. Um, trying to make it easier, he act- we actually invited him to a meeting with our youth services people, Melissa and Cassie. And they were, you know, they had sent him uh what were our plans are for the heart of Cedar Springs, what we're doing and all that. And then out of that visit, then he started brainstorming and thinking, you know, we could we could do a favor, we could be a, you know, a better partner, maybe we can do something at at least around the grounds, around the library, back where the the holding ponds are and that part of the green, but it's not the heart on the side where all these other activities are going. And they'll and it's getting to be more and more used and more wanted and people, they're having to schedule now because there's there, you know, that's going to increase. But his heart was that we would have the grounds around the library at the back, behind the the patio, that we just wouldn't have to worry about asking permission to use. It was cumbersome and he was making it easier and I just thought that was a really nice gesture.
So what is, to clarify, what is your understanding of the library board's position on what's been presented?
Well, I I've sent it to them, we have a board meeting on the twenty-fourth. I explained to them what it was, I explained what I just explained to you, that how the the whole idea of an agreement came up, uh, you know, came up. And that it's the city's way of trying to make things easy for the library, that we don't have to ask for every piece of ground that we wanna go out and have kids do something on. But in the other, on the other side, there has to be some kind of agreement to make sure that, you know, that we we all understand it, you know, it's it's a part of the the legal thing you do. If something goes wrong or somebody gets hurt, or if we put out something out there that's really dangerous or, you know, that the city wouldn't be liable for it. But we're, we partner so closely with this with the city and with Michael and and your staff that um I don't perceive that happening because we we always wanna communicate.
So what was your understanding? Did did they not vote on it? Did they table it?
They've only just seen it, they only got it.
Okay, so should we table this until they have the opportunity?
Adam Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion to table this until the library board has looked at it and approved it at this time.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Ms. Nixon, discussion? Do you have, Ms. Nixon, do you have a?
Oh, no, I was going to second, but someone beat me to it.
Okay, so is there any question, discussion, comment on this before we vote to table it?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
We're doing this out of a consideration for the board. I don't, not that I don't want to know what they have to say. I find it difficult that what we decide to do should be dependent upon what they want. Uh, and that may sound a little crass, but I just, we're pretty much giving the the free range of that part of uh the park. Whether there's a period or a comma that's out of place, it seems a little bit trivial. I think we should take a vote on this and complete it and put it to rest.
Okay, well, there's a motion and a second to table it. So that's what we're voting on right now?
I made my comment, that's all.
Another comment?
If I could, uh, I think, given the discussion and the review that the board has done today, if uh the library board agrees and has no additional comments, I'll just put on your consent agenda at the next meeting, so you don't even have to fret about it.
All right, so I then still need a, unless we're withdrawing a motion, there's a motion to table and a second. So any further discussion before we vote on that?
Ms. Clark has raised her hand.
Ms. Clark, do you have something to add?
I just, I I, like I said to the board, I just, they they have it now and I invited them to this meeting so that they could hear a little bit more about it. This is a no-brainer. You know, I I, they're not gonna look at commas and periods and that kind of thing. I think that our hearts will be overwhelmed with joy and partnership and and we'd, you know, we just have such a good relationship with the um with the city, I don't I don't see a problem with it, but.
Sure, but at the same time, the motion is on the table, is 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 out to table this until they can see it and vote on it. So.
That's up to you.
I'm going to call the vote to table it. And I, it's not for money, so all those in favor to table this? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
That's two? Two to five, the motion is tabled. Moving on to motion to be, motion to approve the chamber event. And they have, it looks like two chamber events, family fun night, community summer celebration, community event on June sixteenth. And sidewalk sales art in the heart of art in the heart for June twelfth to coincide with the fire station grand opening. And anticipate adding a CBDT concert from four to ten in the amphitheater. Do I have a motion to approve these chamber events?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the chamber events as written.
Second.
Second.
Hey, any discussion? Mr. Womack, do you have anything to expand on these about?
Um, uh, only that, you know, planning these types of events can be messy. Unfortunately, this is one of those instance instances. Um, so the summer celebration community event uh on June sixteenth uh will be coinciding with the first uh summer concert series or, um, I think we're calling it Music in the Heart. Um, and so those will be occupying kind of the same space. I've got concerns about um the the chamber and and their vendors vacating the space so that uh the crowds uh can then go to the amphitheater for the music. Uh, and then similarly, on June twelfth, um, you know, we're gonna be having our fire station uh thing in from ten until what, three P M? And uh they'll be doing their art in the heart uh at the same time. But then the CBDT is anticipating holding a concert from four until ten. Uh, so I'm just a little concerned that uh the chambers people will be at the uh the heart and we might have some traffic concerns, uh, getting people in and out of there about three to four o'clock. Um, but we also do have Mr. Heisga, who is one of the presidents of the chamber here to discuss and answer questions, if you have anything for him.
Okay, I was just gonna say, um, Manager Womack, do you have any, like, specific recommendations you would like to add to this or?
Um, so uh the, so these are significantly uh better put-together um community events than the ones that we saw last month. Um, a lot cleaner, a lot easier to understand, and they did adopt a number of my uh concerns or recommendations between last, uh, the last meeting and this meeting. Um, so I think it's really just gonna come down to uh ensuring that uh people are not driving their cars out there um into the heart of Cedar Springs. Uh, cuz that's my my biggest concern is I don't want people driving their cars and then, you know, attempting to run over uh citizens who are then walking to watch the concert. Um, so we're just.
That would be bad.
Yeah, so we're just gonna try to make sure that there's not a lot of cars uh try to drive out onto the grass and that uh, you know, one event stops at three and the next event starts at four, so you have an hour of separation there.
Okay, Mr. Heisga, do you have anything to add?
The beauty, the beauty of what's happening is we're we're collaborating and hoping to create synergy around a few events, so that Saturday of the fire barn uh opening is gonna be a wonderful day with some sidewalk sales happening on the street and with art in the heart. We're uh, so that's what we're striving for, we're trying to communicate with the seat, we are, we're communicating well with the CBDT and with the DDA and with the city manager. And I will uh uh, I'm certainly committing myself to that communication and bending where we need to bend in order to keep everybody safe.
Okay, and I would just like to point out that our beautiful new building is very much not a barn. I have been told by lots of uh, lots of our fire folks that it is a fire station. So I just feel like I need to make sure I uh, I I correct you on that, but otherwise, did I do okay, Chief? Chief Fraser?
Maybe steps, but you did well.
Okay.
Is the old building a barn or did I just import that in my brain from some other place?
Well, I think we are trying to call them stations.
A new fire station.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We're taken.
I have a question.
Yes.
The CBDT starts their concert at four P M, um, will the field be occupied with art at that time or is there a planned time for them to remove their stuff from the heart of Cedar, so the concert can continue?
Yeah, we've met with the CBDT and we have redrawn uh map for that day. Um, and the CBDT would like for the art vendors to stay for a while into the concert, but there is, there's nothing in front of the amphitheater. Um, art vendors will be along the rope on the front of the drive and uh in the in the back toward the the statue um area.
The liability insurance, you guys will be posting that, I so, I hope.
Yes.
Thank you, that we have a copy with Mr. Womack.
Should be a done deal already, and if it's not, we'll get right on it.
Yeah, we we do a lot of work with the chamber, I'm pretty sure we have that on file already.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other other questions, concerns, discussion?
I have a concern.
Sure, Ms. Powell.
The last time there was a large event at the amphitheater, unfortunately, somebody decided to park a cargo truck on the amphitheater to load and unload, left it there for quite some time, it was so big. You had, if somebody was on a bike, they had to get off their bike and walk around it. And it was down by the creek, so it was a, it was a pretty precarious situation. So I think we're all gonna have to be aware of the fact that somebody's gonna try it. Let's uh as groups and citizens say, get, you cannot park or drive on the White Pine Trail. And our only, um, if we got somebody that won't get off of it, we are, we can call the Kent County Sheriff's Department, they have jurisdiction over that trail. And um, it's gonna be a problem all summer until we can do something about uh folks being that inconsiderate. They actually drove into the grasses and um it was just a mess, so we'll have to work on that as the uh different events occur, but let's keep people off of that trail, please.
Ms. Powell, for what it's worth, uh, the DPW is gonna start putting an orange barrel or cone on the trail to help prevent people from driving on the trail. Um, but we we do also wanna be considerate that some of these bands and and groups have a lot of stuff to offload off their vehicles. Um, so I I've been trying to adopt a policy where we say, hey, you can go offload your stuff and then go park somewhere legal. Um, but I also can't be at every single event, so we do ask that the organizers of the event uh help police that. But, I mean, you know this, monkey see, monkey do.
Yes.
Uh, they see one car and then all of a sudden there's twelve cars and, you know, it 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 can be difficult, we're we're working on it.
And it's just not acceptable to say, okay, you can park on the White Pine Trail and unload your stuff, that we have to find a different uh way to solve that problem.
Isn't there like a new? Isn't there like a new like stoned part, drive right there or something?
There is. I don't know if it's wide enough for a vehicle to drive on.
It's not.
Um, and frankly, we don't have the authority to allow people to drive on the White Pine Trail either. But with, there is a grass area in between the White Pine Trail and where the fence ends uh, that we have allowed people to drive their vehicles on. Um, but we've also found that, okay, we say you can drive your vehicle up there to offload and then go park somewhere. They just leave their vehicles there.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it, you know, I, I already do twelve to fourteen hour days sometimes. I can't be doing this every single time there's an event.
We know, and that's why we have to make sure the event organizers are aware of this situation, and we can't plug up that trail. There could be a bike race that day. There could be a running race that day. No one should have to go around vehicles ever.
I think, uh, I think one of the things we'll have to do is talk to the Kent County Sheriff's Department um, and, and tell them if somebody's parking on the White Pine Trail, we're gonna ticket and tow the vehicle.
What we're supposed to do.
Okay, other discussion?
Other than that, I'm thrilled to see all these events. It's just wonderful.
I know.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton votes yes. The motion carries for the chamber events. Moving on to item C, motion to approve the city events. Summer concert series from June sixteenth through August eighteenth on Wednesdays from seven to nine P M, coinciding with the social district in Commons area from five to ten P M. on those same dates. And the fire station grand opening on June twelfth from ten thirty to three. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, city events.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I have any discussion?
So I will admit that, um, I'm not immune to the messiness of trying to organize an event. Um, uh, I've had, uh, David Ringler and Hillary Smith at the brewery assisting me, uh, quite a bit. They've helped, uh, a lot getting some of these bands, uh, organized. We should have a final list here very shortly. Um, and trying to deal with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. That's always fun. Um, and the fire station grand opening, um, you know, things are always moving and we're trying to add events and and, uh, add things and create synergy with the chamber and the CBDT, so. Um, they're not perfect at this point, but I think they're under control. Um, Chief Frazier, I'm sure you'll agree with me, but one of the things I'm looking most forward to is we're gonna do a lights and sirens parade around the city uh, at the very beginning of the grand, uh, grand opening for the new fire station. So, um, and I think we'll ask a few people if they'd like to give some short speeches, um, and thanks, uh, at the beginning of that ceremony. Uh, but otherwise, it's gonna be, uh, cooking hot dogs and giving tours of the facility and uh, believe we got sidewalk chalk. Is that, oh, yep, Donna Clark's there. She's smiling and nodding, so we got the sidewalk chalk for the kids and I think it'd be a great time. It'll be a great kickoff to the summer.
Mr. Womack?
Go ahead, if you have a question.
Yes, on, uh, who, uh, whose insurance policy are we under with this, uh, summer concert series for the city is, do we have to take out a policy for that or do we need to? What do we need to do to cover ourselves or are we?
Yeah, I, I don't believe so. The city has a, uh, a general liability policy that covers essentially everything that we do. Um, but, uh, one of the anticipated things I'm going to do, um, especially considering that there's gonna be alcohol involved uh, is I'm going to have Kent County Sheriff's Department, uh, give us another deputy, uh, for each event. Uh, just until we see how things, uh, work out. Um, so we should have at least one deputy full-time at the event. We're gonna ask that they uh, keep one of their regular deputies nearby in their vehicle, um, so long as they're not otherwise working. Uh, we've also asked the, uh, fire department for volunteers, uh, to stand there on standby for medical. Um, so, uh, I, I think we're gonna have a number of people. Uh, and also, Mr. Hall, I'm sure you'll be there out, out there with me. Um, but, uh, one of the things that I think we've all missed with the last COVID year uh, was the community nights that we used to do indoors at, uh, the school. So, similar to the chamber, I think we're gonna have a number of businesses and groups out there with tables and signs saying, hi, we're from the city. If you have something you wanna chat with us about, we're here. Come chat, come chat with us. So I will be out there for several events. I'd like it if the city council people would come out and join me and chat with people and um, that way we can also help keep an eye on the situation.
I plan to be at several of those, Mr. Manager. Any other discussion? I'll do a roll call. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton votes yes. Moving on to item C. Uh, I'm sorry, item D, a motion to approve spending of up to seventy-eight thousand dollars of general fund balance to finalize payment for the new fire station project.
So I would make that motion.
Sorry, I forgot we didn't make a motion.
Motion's been made by Ms. Nixon. Do I have a second?
Second.
That would be Ms. Powell?
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion?
Uh, so this just feels a little bit like airing your dirty laundry. Um, you know, the, the fire station project we had worked on for, uh, two or three years prior to actual, uh, bidding it out and bond council and all, all the very technical uh, difficult things. So our anticipated price, uh, for the station was just a little low. Uh, material costs and everything else was just a little high. Uh, so at the very beginning of the project, uh, there was a difference of about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, myself, FTC and H, Orion, Orion did a great job for us. Um, the fires, fire department themselves, so we did a lot of work, a lot of, uh, scrimping and saving and trying to reduce costs. And, uh, at the end of it, uh, I'm very proud that we've got it down to just seventy-eight thousand dollars difference. So from four hundred thousand to down to seventy-eight. Um, and we, we've anticipated doing this. Uh, it's unfortunate, but that's kind of the cost of doing business, so I would ask that we, uh, authorize paying for the last of the bills. Hopefully, right, uh, Ms. Falcon, this is the last of the bills. Um, and this, it'll feel good on June twelfth. How about that?
I would advocate, it's our job as a city council to ensure that the fire department has the facilities and equipment that they need. And they show up to put out fires and they do that. So to me, this is money well spent. We, we pay to get the services that we need and want for our community. This feels like a pretty good bang for our buck. Any other questions or discussion?
And it's really beautiful.
It's just, the whole thing just makes me so happy. It's, we've needed this for so long. Our, our previous fire station has, has creepingly done what it needed. It's inched along and held together with you know, luck and spit elbow grease from our firefighters and making sure the skinny person gets out of the truck when you when you park it, because we're, we're shoehorning those trucks in. And it's, uh, this is long overdue and it's what we need to do to take care of our community and I'm grateful that we can do it. That's my feeling on it. Any other discussion? All right, I will do a roll call. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton votes yes. Moving on to item E. A motion to set a special meeting to conduct a strategic cleaning session on July fifteenth at six P M.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Be there.
This is a four-hour meeting, so we'll be planning on till about ten o'clock. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And where is it?
Uh, haven't chosen a location yet. Um, I'd like it to be somewhere that's not here. Um, so, um, probably looking at the library, maybe the, uh, Red Bird Bistro upstairs. Uh, there's a couple of locations.
Maybe the fire station.
Even the new fire station.
Yes.
Not, not right here.
That's excellent.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Just as a note, I hope to be camping that week, so if I am close enough, I will attend. But I don't know what our location will end up being.
And even if we are no longer under emergency orders, you could in theory, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Womack, you could zoom in and just not vote, even if we're not, even if we're no longer under any emergency orders. Is that correct?
So, under Kent County rules, which is what we're operating underneath today, uh, that order expires June thirtieth or thirty-first, whatever. I don't know how many days are in June. Um, so in July, theoretically, we shouldn't be able to do that, but under Michigan law, if you have a health reason for not being at the meeting, you could then participate. However, uh, I don't anticipate there's gonna be any voting really at this meeting. Uh, this is gonna be largely discussion about the future. It's gonna be team building. It's gonna be uh, kinda just discussion about what future goals are gonna be.
Okay.
So we don't have to be on camera?
Um, I mean, we never have to be on camera except for council policy. Um, but one of the reasons we don't wanna do in here is cuz it's a very small room.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we could, of course, record it and upload it to YouTube at a future date, but I'm not entirely sure what our technological capabilities will be at that moment in time.
Right.
Um, and we do continue to use Zoom, so we could do that.
But we won't be voting, so.
I don't think so, but we're, obviously anytime I get more than four of you in a room, we wanna follow the open meetings.
Right.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to discussion items. So mark your calendars for that, by the way. Discussion item on House Bill number forty-seven twenty-two, short-term rental legisstr- legislation reintroduced. Mr. Womack, do you, would you like to expand on this for us?
Um, I could, but I didn't choose to put this on the agenda. This is something that, uh, Counselor Powell asked for, so maybe we should hear from her first.
I was just wondering, huh, when are they gonna put this on the floor of vote on it or whatever? It seems to be hanging around for a long time.
Yeah.
I don't know that we have any power or authority over what the state legislature does.
Yeah, so thi- this is one of those ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, statutes. This is a state bill that keeps coming back year after year after year after year. It is pretty much the definition of a special interest group trying to change the law for their benefit. Um, you know, this is an Airbnb law. That's really what it should be called. Um, it doesn't really affect the city of Cedar Springs. Uh, the city of Cedar Springs allows rentals in all, uh, residential districts right now. Uh, so this wouldn't affect us. Um, but I believe we should stand in solidarity with the communities that it will affect, which is primarily beach and resort communities. And, uh, this is also the absolute definition of the state, uh, putting its will onto the local government. Um, this, this is a, a change in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act allows locals, the local planning commissions and the local city councils to decide what is best for the local community. Uh, this change in law would reduce that ability, and so I see it as inherently um, uh, contrary to what the city's interests are.
As I often say, when some of our state legislature members come to our council meetings, it's very frustrating when you claim to be in support of local control until it's something you don't agree with.
So currently, unfortunately, we only have one, uh, person representing our district. There is Representative Mark Heisinger, uh, who is, I believe, the former mayor of Walker.
Of Walker. And he's currently running for the state legislature for the senate.
Correct, so he's, um, attempting to change his position from representative to senator. Um, and so obviously we don't have a senator. He was elected to be Kent County Treasurer, I believe. So, yeah, so contact, uh, Representative, Representative Heisinger if you have an opinion on this bill.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Powell, did you get the discussion on this that you would like?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Moving on to item B, discussion on an ordinance to amend chapter forty, article three, division thirteen, section forty dash four zero nine entitled Commercial and Industrial Side and Rear Setback Reductions of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Cedar Springs. A first reading. Mr. Womack?
Uh, so it's a little unfair, I apologize, but the planning commission only recommended this two days ago. Um, a- as you guys know, sometimes you have these weird quirks in your calendar where there's only a two-day gap between your meetings. Um, but, uh, this is something that I've been working with the planning commission on for six months now, uh, quite some time. Um, the city's, uh, rear setbacks in particular were larger than the surrounding communities. Um, there are some communities that allow, uh, as little as zero lot lines in their commercial districts. Um, which we don't. We allow zero lot line side setbacks, but not rear setbacks. Um, essentially what's going on here is we have several, uh, large retail spaces out on Seventeen Mile Road Tractor Supply Company and Family Farm and Home in particular. And they have now sold their outlots in the front of their buildings, which a butt seventeen-mile road. Um, so with the forty-foot rear setbacks that currently exist, you are really uh, impinging on developers' abilities to use those properties, uh, they make the building envelope very small. Um, so this proposed change would take that down, I think, to twenty foot in the rear. Uh, made some other minor adjustments. Um, and it's good for development. That's really what it comes down to.
Okay, any questions about it? This is a discussion item, so we'll be hearing it again next month and you will have an opportunity to, um, and just to clarify, Mr. Womack, the recommendation of the planning commission from two days ago is to amend this.
Correct. They, uh, they recommended that the city council pass the ordinance as presented.
Okay. So any questions? We'll be seeing this next month to vote on. Then moving on to communications. The Cedar Springs Brewing Company Cedar Blitz Afterparty Community Event, May fifth, twenty twenty-one, has been approved. Um, is there anybody from the brewing company that wants to add anything to this? If not, we'll move on.
I don't think so. The reason I put it into your agenda is cuz technically, under the city council's policies, I should have brought that to you uh, for approval, cuz it's not an event that's been held in the past, but as you guys know, brewery holds very regular events. And, uh, the only reason that they would even have to apply for this event is cuz they're anticipating having live music past seven thirty P M. Uh, which under the city's ordinances is the noise ordinance time, so everything is going to occur on their private property, other than that, small tidbit. Uh, and it's also, um, uh, you know what, I, I apologize. I see I, I put the wrong date there.
I was wondering about this.
Yeah, I kinda wondered also, but.
I, I think May fifth is the date I. I think May fifth is the date I approved of the event.
Okay, because I was going to say, this is like already happened, is what I.
No, I apologize. The event is on May twenty-second, and it coincides with the Cedar Blitz Bike Race, which you guys did previously approve of.
So please note that for the record, May twenty-second.
I apologize for that. So I've been working very closely with.
I was like, is it really, was it a really great time? Do they want to tell us about it? Because it happens like last week.
So we had a big meeting with the race folks just a couple of days ago. That seems like it's pretty well organized. We're looking forward to that. They said they think they have a hundred and fifty to two hundred racers. That's a lot of bicycles. So I really hope that goes well.
Excellent. Then item B, the White Pine Trail Notice of Intent to Establish a Condominium. Any questions?
No, but I'll borrow your phrase, pockets full of nothing on this one.
Okay, because I'm like, it's an interesting letter.
Sometimes they're literally just communications, and there's no reason to discuss or anything else.
Okay, good enough. And then Consumers Energy, the summer peak race. Any questions about that for anyone? And Jojo Negan has put in an application for the planning commission. We have a community event calendar, the Diego House Budget Recommendation, Western Michigan M P A brochure, and the Drain Project Expected Street Closures. Anything we should speak to on the Drain Project Street Closures?
No, other than the fact that, again, we just had a meeting a little over a week ago, then we discovered these dates. We've been doing our best to get the word out as quickly as possible. We made sure it was in the post. Code enforcement officers sent out letters to all the houses that were in that general area that we thought would be impacted by those road closures. You know, it's, it's a sign of progress. Road closures are unfortunate, but it's a sign of progress.
All right, then Department reports. City Manager.
It's, it's been tough. We lost Shandell, our Deputy Finance Director, and our clerk is at a conference this week, so unfortunately, we've been very shorthanded. So unfortunately, we were closed from twelve until two this week, but it was a very slow week, so things actually worked out really well. We are looking for a couple of summer help folks from the D P W department, so if you guys know anybody who's looking for a good outdoor job, we'd love to see some applications. And I think the only other thing I would note is that the road project that you guys approved of as part of the consent agenda, I think we overestimated the cost a little bit, and the bids are a little bit lower than we expected. So I believe we had something like two hundred and forty thousand dollars set aside for that project, and it came in at about a hundred and twenty.
Oh.
Yeah, so about fifty.
Something you don't hear very often.
So I'm working with Ms. Falcon and the city engineer right now to figure out what's the best course of action moving forward, whether we want to add on maybe some future projects to this year, because we have the money. Do we want to save that money and start using it for engineering costs for next year's projects? Or is there some alternative things that we didn't really have planned for, but that we'd love to see done, such as the Fifth Street and Cherry Street Bridge and some other things? So I guess we'll bring it back to as soon as we can, hopefully with something good.
Okay. Anything else then, Mr. Manager?
No, other than the fact that I see Bill O'Roe. Is that Bill or is that Tanya?
It's Tanya.
Okay, so I guess we have Tanya with the Department of Public Works.
So Tanya, so D P W, do you have anything specifically you'd like to share with us?
Not at this time, no.
Brush day looks like it went really well. And thank you for that. Anything else for the D P W folks? And the Fire Department, woo-hoo, new station. Anything for us, Chief Frazier?
You skipped over Sergeant Probst, but I'll take his.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. We'll come back to him. If you're ready, go ahead.
Are you talking to Sergeant Probst or?
Well, I can. I was just going to say I would come back to him, but Sergeant Probst, do you have anything for us?
No, I did not. It sounds like the Fire Department is ready to go though.
We're all so excited about this new fire station. Chief Frazier?
Well, I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody, and I mean, everybody that's involved. This has been, like Mr. Womack said, a three-year project. I'm glad it finally come to fruition, and I'm glad that Ms. Falcon is going to pay my bill, so I can get the, the key to the front door. It's something, like I said three years ago, that the city can be very, very proud of. It, it just adds to the heart of Cedar Springs, and I will someday go to my grave knowing that I was a small, that tiny dot of this project, and very, very appreciative of everybody that was involved, the council, the city staff, the city manager, the construction people. I mean, just, just a great group of people to work with. Thank you.
Any questions for Chief Frazier? I'm so excited to help you cut this ribbon and celebrate this.
Help me? I thought you were going to do that.
Well, I I will be there, and I will say some nice words, but you and the Fire Department are the people of the hour.
Well, you know, you can talk to Mr. Gross. Fire Department do, they appreciate the kudos, but they don't step up and be heroes. We're just common, everyday folk that do our jobs.
Amen, and we appreciate it, and you do that very important job, and you do it very well. So we thank you for that. Anything else for Chief Frazier? Anything, Mr. Womack? Are you the one speaking for the city clerk tonight? Do we have anything additional from the city clerk?
I guess, unless Darla has something she wants to say, no. So the city clerk is at the International City Clerks Association Meeting down at the Amway in Grand Rapids. I believe she took a part in planning that event. So she's having a good time and learning a lot of stuff down at her conference. And of course, every time I take the minutes, I have a newer appreciation for what she does during these meetings.
I hear that. We have some people running. And like the petitions are in, correct?
Yep, so in November, unfortunately, we're going to lose a sitting councilperson, and we have three individuals running for two seats. It'll be an interesting race. And I've spoken with a couple of those people, and they have indicated that if they're not chosen to serve on the city council, that they would like to serve on the planning commission. So some good folks who have, I believe, the city's interests, best interests at heart.
I, I would agree on all accounts. So we'll be looking forward to hearing from all of them. And the mayor is not running again, so we should be celebrating him at each one of these meetings that we have left. And I see there needs to be some cake in our future, I think.
Right.
So tuck that away in all of your collective brains as we have the mayor make a victory lap here for all the wonderful things he's done in the city. Then moving on to the Finance Director.
I have nothing to add. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Nothing.
Excellent job on the budget.
I apologize. Her microphone's behind her water bottle. I couldn't see it.
Excellent job on the budget.
Thank you.
As always. Anything for Darla? Code Enforcement?
She's not here with us, but I did want to say I do appreciate all the work she does. It's a very difficult position. She's helped me out with a lot of other projects that are not code enforcement related. So she, she's very helpful, and I really do appreciate the work she does.
Building inspection. Boards and commissions. We have the Library Board and the new Rec Board. We need to come up with a good way to say the acronym. The N K C E Board.
Nixie.
Anything from that? All right, then we'll move on to council comments, and we will start with Ms. Atchison.
Um, I don't have much to say, just once again, to thanks to all the city staff that have helped get things organized, and I'm like, I'm enjoying seeing the fact that the roads are starting to get worked on. And the drain thing started on my street, I believe, or that's what they're doing right on the fifth. And so things are starting to move along. I feel like this, I've had my first hope that this COVID thing is going to be. We're going to get past it. Everybody get your vaccinations. It's, that's what's going to help us, you know.
My fourteen-year-old got his first vaccine today.
I know that we all do have a choice, but I, I choose on the side of helping, not just myself, but everybody else. And thanks for all the council members. The way we work together, I really enjoy it. And that's it.
Mr. Gross?
I also would like to promote the idea that everybody become vaccinated against COVID. I totally hate this mask. Unfortunately, I understand the need for it. I've heard a lot of the complaints and so forth about illness and everything that comes from the shots. I can tell you that they didn't affect me, and that's easy to say, because I have a little more girth and size than some of the others for it to affect. But I can tell you that my wife has arms that are less than half of mine, and she didn't have any trouble with them either, and we had the two-shot series, so it may affect people differently, but don't let the fear of getting sick from the shot affect you and keep you from doing it. I want to thank everybody for being here. I apologize for my absence last month. Unfortunately, work causes it at times, and to be honest, we had rather been here because we probably were more productive. Not that that wasn't productive, it just, they probably could have survived without me being there, so, but anyway. Congratulations to everybody and the work that they do, and look forward for better things coming.
All right, Ms. Nixon?
Well, just as always, thanks to the city staff, the work they do. Can imagine that not having the full care to do meetings and the other things she does in the offices. Mayhem, everyone else pick up a little extra, so I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to our new fire station being open.
And Ms. Powell?
Well, I agree with every thank you and appreciation that we've all say and feel toward all of our staff and each other. But I, I do have a couple of announcements. The CBD Team Meeting in April had to be postponed. There was a minor COVID outbreak amongst the members, so May twentieth, six thirty at the library, if you can be there. Memorial Day, the Alley of Flags will be at the Elmwood Cemetery. They're putting up a hundred and ninety-nine flags this year. And of course, help is always appreciated. I don't know when or where. You have to ask the Legion if you want to help. The welcome sign down at the staging area is drop dead gorgeous. If you haven't seen it yet, it's, it's just a work to behold. And the, I'd like to especially thank city clerk for her wonderful job she did on our city calendar this year. You can go to any month, see anything that's going on. It's just so informative, rather than have to look in a bunch of different places. So I really appreciated that. And carry on, let's have some fun.
Counselor Race?
I'm glad you said something about the city calendar, because there's a lot going on, so I'm very excited about that. Yes. I'm sick of being stuck in my house, want to get some fresh air, see some people. All these new events coming, I'm very excited about that, and I'm excited to be there to help out in any way that I can. Well, I'd like to thank the D P W for going through and cleaning up the Prairie Run Development. They removed some old tree stumps and made everything look really nice there. I know it took a little bit of, I know the stumps have been there for a little while now, but we finally were able to get it in the budget and save some money, and we were able to take care of that, so I'm very happy for that. Well, that's about it.
Okay. Mayor Hall?
Yeah, thanks everyone for being there this evening. I hope to be there next month, so a question for Mr. Womack on this special meeting for our strategy planning. Is it possible to invite the candidates that are running for my seats, the two new people, if we could have them come on board to get their input? And it's great to know that we have people back up now to go on the planning commission. Also, as a note, we have extra money for streets. Let's see if we can put North Fifth on there. That road's falling apart pretty good. And the great weather is coming on, and hopefully, everything with COVID will go away, and with our big grand opening celebration for Chief Frazier's new house. And I would hope to see him in his chief suit. Thank you one and all. Good evening.
His chief suit. That's fabulous.
Very nice picture of him on the wall at the fire station. I would hope that he would be in that uniform.
That would be lovely. That would be some wonderful artwork. No? If you would like a picture taken, Chief Frazier, I could probably make that happen. I had a time.
That was a, what do they call that now? Filtered on a old photo. There, as far as I know, and Ms. Falcon can back me up, there's not enough money in the budget to buy a suit to fit this body, so.
Oh, dear.
Chief Frazier, I would donate my paycheck coming up here to buy you a suit like that.
Mr. Hall, you're breaking up. I can't hear you.
Oh, dear. Oh, my gosh, you all are just so amazing. Okay, anything else, Mayor Hall?
No, thanks. I'm finished. Thank you. Good evening.
I would just like to reiterate what several other counselors have said about getting vaccinated. The clinic down in Grand Rapids, three oh three Monroe Street, from eight thirty to five thirty, is doing walk-ins every day, age twelve and up. So my fourteen-year-old is very excited. He got vaccinated today, has the T-shirt, and he is all about it. So let's do this, so we can get our community back to doing wonderful things and interacting and having summer reading programs and concerts and all kinds of things where we can, and I can't wait to give everybody a hug. And I'm just really excited about that, and I am so excited to cut this ribbon with our Fire Department on June twelfth, and I look forward to everybody being there and to having a really fabulous summer reading program and concerts in the park. And with that, we are adjourned. And with that, we are adjourned, eight twenty-five.
Thanks, Pam.
Not too bad?
Good job.
Not quite as good as the mayor, but we'll get her figured out as he takes his victory lap.
Thank you, everybody.
We have to have a party for the mayor. We absolutely have to have a party, or two.